Everybody ready? Okay, everyone, it's 7:45 on Tuesday, April 12th. It's the Warren Township High School Board Meeting. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody would stand up, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Recognitions. I'm assuming we don't have any tonight?
No recognitions this evening?
I noticed that by the big crowd tonight, okay? Next up is reception of visitors. I did not see anybody signed in, but this is the point in time, if anybody would like to address the board, you're more than welcome to. Okay. This is gonna go really quick tonight. Next up is President's Report. So it's been a while since we've had a chance to talk about many things because we were busy with other issues at the time, and then I was out of time for the last meeting. So the one thing I wanted to bring up is, it was brought to our attention a while ago that with the new superintendent coming on board, we get a free in-district workshop. So I talked to all the board members about what they would like to see in a workshop from the list. And I talked to our new superintendent, Danny. He would like to participate in it. So anything we do would probably be in July timeframe. Be like about half a day if we did it all at one time. And the two biggest topics that came up, not that it's a vote, but it's a vote, was the one was called the Board's Work and Community Engagement. And the second one was entitled, "The Board and its Superintendent Developing a Productive Relationship." So I think that's the one we're gonna lean towards because we have a brand-new superintendent. It would make sense to see what we can do to build that relationship right away. If we like it, we can go ahead and take the second one, too, that everybody really liked, the one about the community engagement. So nothing to act on, there's no date set, but I just wanted to give feedback because I reached out and asked everybody what they wanted to do. So I wanted to tell you, this is what we're going to do. I just can't tell you when we're going to do it. So that's the only thing I wanted to talk about, unless there's any other board members that have something they would like to talk about. Now, we're on to committee reports.
All right, I am for Mr. Geo Caras, gonna talk about the March 6th Curriculum Committee. Is that the date? No, take it back, April 6th would make more sense. April 6th Curriculum Committee, they met and reviewed the necessary updated changes to Chapters 8 and 10 of the Student Handbook. The changes included the updating of national test dates, updating job titles mentioned in chapters, and clarifying language in those chapters. Additionally, information about final exams was updated to reflect the new procedure that was put in place by the district this past fall. Final exams are now weighted at 10 or 15% of a student's semester grade, and that weighting is determined at the PLT level. And finally, the committee discussed the district's Title I plan for next school year. This discussion is a necessary part of the annual grant-writing process for the district. And next, I do believe that Dr. Engle's going to talk about the April 4th Insurance Committee meeting.
Yeah, at the April 4th Insurance Committee meeting, we approved the minutes of the February 9th, which I believe is attached in your board docs there. We went through the plan overviews for the PPO and HMO, Vision and Dental. We also went through the renewal for the rates for the EBC, PPO, Dental, HMO, Vision and Life. We also looked at adult orthodontia as a possible change to the dental plan for the following year, but then we tabled that until the following year. We also went through a little kind of, I don't know what you wanna call it, a challenge, if you will. It's called Sip Ahoy through the EBC. It's, when I first looked at it, it looked like people were like sip ahoy, like on a boat or something. But it's a water drinking, a promotion of water drinking during the month of April as like a kind of a cleanse and has like weekly challenges of how much water you should be drinking. And so that was sent out to all staff, I believe, was it last week? I wanna say last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, so.
So it's different than the Sip Ahoy that Tony was playing at his party last weekend, right? Just checking, okay.
Yeah, Sip Ahoy, Chips Ahoy, yeah, it's kind of, it's a play on words and you can have an adult themed really quick. Sip Ahoy, but it's a water.
Okay, just checking.
Yep. And then we adjourned the meeting and we have the renewals for tonight. It's on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. We also, Dr. Keely, why don't you come up to the mic there on the end with Dr. Engle? Bring your stuff with you. Or go on the end there, Pat, we have it open. You can have a seat this evening, Dr. Keely, look at that, thank you. And why don't you talk about the Parent, the Student Parent Handbook Committee, which met just before our meetings this evening?
Besides this evening, we, there's been several meetings prior to this. Annually, each year, we update the handbook from mundane changes like name changes, title changes, alpha slices for deans and counselors, to more significant changes, obviously, in school procedures or rules. This year is no different. The vast majority of the changes are very non-substantive changes. Name changes, title changes, calendar inserteds, so on and so forth. The only thing of substance or as of significance that will be a change in the discipline and conduct is the headwear policy. And then for extracurriculars, both athletics and activities code of conduct has been revised. Not really changed, just more streamlined, so it's easier to read and more consistent in our practices when we unfortunately do gotta give kids consequences. It is extremely easy to read and to enforce.
Thanks, Pat. All right, that's all for our committee report. Superintendent's Report is next. And it's in terms of crowds, it's either feast or famine, so. Tonight, unfortunately, or fortunately, guys, we don't have a great crowd, but we have a great crowd. We just don't have great in numbers. But the people who are here are great. So Pete and Jay? I'm sure. Pete and Jay are here to give the board a presentation regarding our science department. It's all yours, guy. And we don't have an advancer, but Brandon will be more than happy to get us to the first slide of your presentation, I believe.
Okay, so Jason, I'm at Oak Plain. Pete?
And I'm Pete Crewin. I'm at the Almond Campus. So we see the students, they get two years there, two years here, right? So we got two departments. One department, two different locations. So this is a overall kind of goal for our department. We want to ensure that we offer a progressive series of courses that prepare students for post-high school, college and employment options. To this end, we provide mini-levels, elective options and academic supports to make sure that all of our students are successful, however they enter the district. But we want all of them to have a good science experience, whichever path they end up kind of specializing in.
Next. So to kind of make this work, we're gonna start off with Oak Plain. We'll transition into Almond. Understanding that Pete and I worked together closely the entire way through. I mean, this is something that, it's unique. Most schools, you have one department head or one person who's managing the department. If we're not together, there's problems, right? So whatever we present here, it's obviously, you know, it's both of us. So current challenges that we have, managing the large class sizes, of course, that's gonna give us some difficulties. We're trying to get introduction of the fundamental lab skills that earlier on, it was a problem. Now with COVID, it's a bigger problem, right? And I'm sure you're hearing that from everybody who presents. There's some challenges that COVID has presented. Making courses relevant to students, providing and offering academic support where it's needed. The real, the real thing that I wanna focus on, though, is this, this last part here. The recovery of student study habits after COVID. And then turning all of our middle school students into high school students. That is a real challenge that we have. And then Pete takes that challenge on later to get those students that are high school-ready to get ready for the world. It's, it's our biggest challenge. Next, Brandon. So what I have here, it didn't work out. I thought we'd have a bigger screen there. I took a word cloud and I put together a whole bunch of the communities that we have, that we use, that funnel into Warren Township High School. We're talking about Grays Lake. You know who funnels in here, but if I were to list them off, I could go on and take half of our presentation. We have such a wide range of learners that come here in different places. Viking, woodland, you get all that. We have to take all these kids from different places and different readiness levels and get them ready for high school. It is the number-one challenge that we have. It's not science. It's getting them ready for high school. So at our school, we dump them into Oak Plain. That's supposed to be some steps in the middle there where we're building up their skills. We're building up their knowledge base. We're also building up their confidence. One of the things that's so overlooked with education is it's not just about the content that we're teaching. It's building confidence in the subject matter, for us, science, of course, but any subject matter. We have to build their confidence. And then we get them ready for Almond. And Almond gets them ready for the world. And to go back that little slide there that's not showing up well, that's our community, right? That is Warren Township's boundaries. Next slide, Brandon. Just to kind of take a look at what we offer at Ninth and at Oak Plain, we're very easy. You get an option of Biology freshman year or Biology freshman year. And then Chemistry sophomore year. And if you're really, really ambitious, you could take Chemistry sophomore year. We don't have a lot of options. We have decided we are gonna focus, we are hyper-focused on getting kids Biology and Chemistry. And when they have that foundation, they get to Pete and then they can soar. And then they have a bunch of different opportunities.
To Jay's point, we have many different levels of however they enter. We help them either work on their reading skills or their math skills. So we're very careful about the placement. And a lot of students might start at a Biology level, right? And jump to, straight to college prep chem. They might kind of change track, so to speak.
So they can as the years progress. I think it is important to note, though, while we offer, I wanted to show that what Pete is 100% correct. We have different levels. The vast majority of our students are in the college prep level, and that actually proposes or poses its own challenge. When we look at grouping the significant different types of learners that we have in college prep, we're talking kids who read with math scores of about a 205, with kids who are at about a 240. You can imagine, especially if you were a teacher in this room, how difficult it is to try to challenge that entire room and differentiate your instruction to challenge everybody. So, correct Pete, but most of our kids are in that college prep class. Next slide, Brandon. We just have a couple pictures. I want you to know that we're not just as boring as we, as Pete and I are right now. If you get us in front of our kids, I think you'd be probably a little bit more interested in our presentation, seeing us in action. And I don't mean us, I mean our departments, our people. I think you would, I think you'd be excited. And we'd welcome any one of you at any time to come see our classes. I think that's where we really shine. It's not at a, especially not me, Pete's actually really good at talking. He's the, I kinda follow his footsteps when we're like meeting people. But in our classrooms, you really see the other side of us come out. And I think that's where I would like, if you ever had the time, I know with your other jobs and stuff, that's where you guys will see the action take place. So just a couple pictures. Kids doing work, that upper right-hand corner, very proud, that's my first-period class. I could go on and on, but I'm gonna take all of our time. I am so proud of that class, but we're gonna keep going. Next slide, Brandon. You see a couple things going on in Chemistry and Biology. You got a flame test going on on the left with bunsen burners from high school. That probably brings back memories, right? But I'm, again, I'm going a little bit, a little too slow, so go ahead, Brandon. And then we get to Pete here.
So when they come over to the Almond Campus, Physics is what we want all of them to experience as juniors. Occasionally, we'll have students that transfer in, but we want them to have that physics experience. It's obviously key for colleges that wanna see that type of depth coming in. Senior year is the year that they get to kind of focus on something that interests them before or an area that they didn't get a chance to experience. So we've got 11 different senior electives, and they appear at all different levels. So there's something for everybody's senior year. And we want all of our students to experience four years of science, right? So we really are careful junior year. We call it our Senior Science Elective Roadshow. We go around and make sure that all the students have a one-on-one with the teacher. So we get a little bit of insight, like I'm interested maybe in the military. I'm interested in medical school or something. And we say, well, this might be what you wanna consider if they already don't have an opinion based on their friends or their peer groups. Okay. So here's some action pictures. It's really nice that the township property lines up with ours. So we can go out and do insect collection there. We've got the material science class working on solar panels there. So that's kind of been a nice thing that we've got the displays going. This is our AP Bio group up here. And you can see all the pictures that Jay chose and ours, they're, they're lab classes. And that's the thing, is we try to build everything around hands-on data collecting, analysis. They've had enough screen time, so we're kind of doubling down on that. Okay, next one. We've got more, I think we've got our Earth Science class there and a Geology class. A big range of opportunities for students, all right? Okay, so the Astronomy Club, really proud of. It's our student-run club, and this happens on Friday nights. The picture doesn't really do justice to the crowd. But this has been going on for more than 20 years now. And I like it because it's totally student-run. The advisor, and they have guest speakers, they'll get together on Friday nights. There's no competition, and this club's open to everybody. A lot of kids show up just, you know, whenever they can. Next slide.
As far as clubs go, our Science Olympiad team, they're doing a great job. They're not, they haven't been around as long as astronomy. They are building, though, and what Mr. Cora has done with that has been phenomenal. They're doing a great job. We have multiple kids who place at everything, every single year at our state tournaments.
At state, right?
Yeah, they're really good.
And in making sure that all of our, you know, clubs serve everybody, it's interesting because you kind of go through the students and you talk to them there. I was working with a student, they were working on a Yaggy antenna design for the Wi-Fi competition. Like, that's a thing at state, and they did place. But in that crowd, at least half of those students will be PhDs. It's just, it's a really intimidating crowd because I probably wouldn't have been part of it high school. But it's a crowd that we're just super happy that they're that engaged and this exists because last year, when it was online, it wasn't like that. So Cora did a great job bringing that forward. Okay, next slide. And the other two clubs, the MECS, the Mother Earth Concerned Student, this one has been going on, I think even, maybe longer than 20 years. And this is kind of a, a kind of a catch-all club. We've got students from both campuses. The big event is the Des Plaines River Cleanup. And we bring in guest speakers, and a lot of it ties to environmental topics. And there, it's, it's not as tightly structured because there's no competition, but it's a great chance for students to experience just different things that they wouldn't see, and very outdoor focus. The last club, Chess Club, we're claiming credit for that. That's not a paid stipend. That's just, it's a nerd party in the cafeteria after school. And once again, it's pretty intimidating because you've got some kids that are playing, multiple kids, Central Park style.
Oh, wow.
Walking around like, I'm out. All right.
So 85% of our WTHS students take four years of science. Don't look at that number and think, looking at nerds, you probably got As, why are you settling for a B? It's not that 15% of our kids don't want to take science. Some of those kids don't have the option anymore. They have other things that are taking them, whether it's tech campus or remediation or whatever. They might want to. So I just say, that 85% is actually better than it even looks. And we want it to continue. That is so important to us.
So here's our AP scores from last year. AP Physics, which we had four, like 120 students, I think. And that's a, it's a tough exam, right? Probably, you know, your son took that. And so we're real proud of that. We've got that program done well. AP Physics, is there a second year? So that score looks a little higher than the Illinois average because of that reason. AP Bio, super-popular course, right? The pre-med students, that sort of thing. We've really got that, we got the right people teaching the right course. AP Chem, we're very proud that we have that offering also. The Environmental Science, you look at that and you're like, hey, we're almost average. But that course, it was new as of, I think, eight years ago. It hasn't been here 10 years. So that teacher has since retired. We've got another teacher that took it on, decided that they could do it in an hour instead of an hour and a half, which made it more accessible to students. So the teacher that's doing it now is doing a great job because many of the students that take the course would never have taken AP Science. So he's just doing a great job, kind of throwing his arms around it, and he's got great labs. So I'm very proud of our scores and, you know, the fact that we'll, we'll support students that, you know, don't, that might see it as a stretch, right? We look at it and we wanna give them all the support so they can at least see what college-level rigor is like. All right, Brendan?
We're actually proud of that as well at Oak Plain, despite the fact that we don't have an AP course. It's amazing how many kids come back. Yeah, when I was in high school, there's no way I would've went to a different campus to visit my teachers. It's, that's one of the advantages of having a four-year school is you can go down the hall to see your freshman year teacher. We have a lot of kids who come back for a club or whatever to tell us, whoa, what I learned in honors Bio, we saw that again in AP Bio, and I remembered most of it, not all of it, but it really gave me that foundation, right? So I think that, those AP scores are a reflection of the entire department, right?
We would not have those scores if it wasn't for their preparation, freshman, sophomore year.
Yeah, I'm not trying to steal your teacher's thunder, but, but Oak Plain, we work hard. We're proud of those scores as well. We really are.
They come in ready.
So we live in a society absolutely dependent on science and technology, and yet we have cleverly arranged things so that almost no one understands science and technology. That's a clear prescription for disaster. I think that's interesting because we don't feel that way here. That is a, that is a quote.
Yeah.
But for Warren Township High School, our department, we understand this problem. We are trying our best to make sure our kids are ready for science and technology. Sorry, next slide.
So we strive to develop students who understand science and technology in order to prepare them, fundamentally to be good citizens, right? They're gonna be voters, they're gonna be consumers, they're gonna be parents. And then to add on top of that, we wanna make sure that we're kind of getting them ready for whatever career, whether it's getting AP. Wherever they're gonna go, right? That they've got an understanding of the topics that they're talking about in the news. So we're really proud of, you know, the support that we have from the administration, and we got great labs, great equipment. And we got a lot of success stories for, you know, all of our students. And hopefully, you all have firsthand experience with our successes. All right, Brendan? There's probably some coming in online, so we'll.
Yeah. So I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to thank you both, like we were talking before. And I've got, two of my kids graduated college Bio/Chem majors. And if I called them, you know, Bio or Chem nerds, they'd wear a badge of honor. They're still in those fields, and yeah, they're, the foundation, their enthusiasm, it started here. They still talk about teachers specifically from high school that they remember and what they learned from them. So just thank you. You guys do a great job.
We appreciate that. Tell that for us, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Last ones are open, right? We love to answer questions and that sort of thing.
Thanks, Brendan.
Thank you for listening and importantly, thank you for your service. I know the pay's awesome and the hours are better, right? Joke.
Thanks, Pete, Jake. We do have one or two other announcements under the Superintendent Report. Dr. Keely, will you come back? I just, will you come to the table just for a second? I'm gonna make one announcement, but I think the next one is gonna be yours after this one. First off, we are for, most of our board members hopefully will be available on May the 22nd, Sunday, May the 22nd. That is our graduation this year. And while not everybody might make it, we're certainly hopeful that the majority of our board members can be there. We're back to our normal now arena, our old Sears Center-type process. So we're gonna try to put all of those kind of communications together. We, Gene has a form that we're gonna, we have or we will distribute to you guys just to let us know kind of what your plans are for that day and availability and if you need transportation down there. So we'll put the whole day together, but it's, we were thinking about waiting till the next meeting and then we thought, no, we better not do that, it's gonna be honest, before we know it. So it's May the 22nd, and we'll start getting information from you all. So the next announcement is actually related to the next two election dates, one of which is June 28th and then November the, is it 8th?
September 8th.
Anyway, Pat has some exciting news about Oak Plain.
We were able to have a partnership with the Lake County Clerk's Office, and the Oak Plain Campus will be an election site for the June 28th and then also the general election in November. We work closely with their office, they're awesome people. We think we have it all figured out, and we think it'll be successful. Especially now that, that November date, there's no school. And the problem they've been having is, like even me as an administrator and security being under my realm, like just having random people come into a school when kids are here, like, that just didn't feel really, real good. So now that we are off, I'm glad we're able to get back and help out the county the best we can. So we're excited to be, five precincts will be here on June 28th and then November 8th as well.
Pat, the other thing, will you just update the board on some of the locations that, for the primary in June that used to be in March? What was, can you just talk to the board a little about places that used to be?
Yeah, he had talked about it being like country clubs and he had some odd places. And I think because schools were bouncing elections out of there for security reasons. And schools having a challenging time in the past. I mean, when we were all growing up, you went and voted at schools and it was no big deal. But just a little bit more sensitive to it now with kids, keeping kids safe, so.
Yeah, so it was nice that they kind of reached out, and we, obviously with the availability on both those dates, were able to do that at Oak Plain. So it's, just wanted to thank Pat and Michelle for working with the county on that. I think it's good, good for our community.
Can we internally promote our 18-year-old students to come and vote at school?
We have a voter registration drive. Actually, I personally visited, I don't know how many social studies classes already, and I got a bunch more on my schedule. I just give a two-minute, I don't like take a lot of class time from them. It's like a three-minute presentation about our civic duty to vote. And then any kids that are interested in registering, I then step out in the hallway, and it only takes them a minute to register, and I'm a registrar now for Lake County. And then I register them on the spot, and then I go drop off the registration at the County Clerk's Office. So I think I've been in maybe four teachers' classrooms and three or four periods for each teacher. And I know I got a bunch more after the AP test because teachers that teach AP didn't want any, which I respect. I'll go in there after AP classes. So quite a few of our kids got an opportunity in classroom. And then we made, we created a partnership with the Warren Newport Library. And Ms. Tully, who's awesome and super supportive, is gonna come over here during all the lunch hours at Almond and be open to register kids to vote. And then I'll jump in on some lunch hours, too, and just be available for any kids that heard my presentation but didn't register that day.
Because I had heard that if any student that was 17 but was turning 18 by the November election can vote.
They can vote in June because it's a primary. So when it's a primary, you just have to turn 18 prior to the general, which is part of my presentation to the class. And the social studies teachers, and they typically talk about it, you know, anyway. But they're certainly repeating what I'm saying. So about, probably a third of our junior class will turn 18. That's my guess, about 30%, 32%. So we're making sure juniors are aware of that opportunity, there's civic duty to vote. And we're hoping we get quite a few registered. I think I got like, I don't know, 30 or 40 kids registered already, so hopefully more. And they even register online, too, and a lot of kids, you know, may be registered already, too, so.
The voter registration process has been ongoing here for a number of years. So just the fact that we're having an election site, our voting site at Oak Plain is really the new information. But it's, we appreciate Pat's work and everybody else just trying to make sure kids understand civic duty is very important.
And the Black Student Union is holding, is finalizing their voter registration like they did a couple years ago. They're doing that again this summer. So I'm working with them. They're gonna do that in June, early June. They're gonna do another voter registration drive, so that'll be another opportunity to promote our kids' civic duty to vote.
This is a very, very minor point, but going along with that theme of doing their civic duty, is there a, I'm not even sure what the rules are. Is there a club that would be interested in working that, volunteering that day to help facilitate voting? I mean, I wasn't, I'm not sure if there's a tie where kids that are 18 are allowed to help volunteer for those five precincts that are now gonna be at Oak Plain. There seems to be always a shortage of people that, yeah, it's just to give them that experience of helping to facilitate. And I'm sure maybe you probably thought of that, or maybe in the summer, it's, I mean, maybe November, but.
My assumption, and we typically get this, like they send, hey, we're looking for election judges.
Right.
That comes. My assumption is that's coming, particularly now that we're a site, and they'll lean on us to try to promote amongst kids to be election judges.
Yeah, that's what I, that's where I was going is, it's great that we're.
We have not gotten that yet, though, but I'm assuming we will, Tony.
No, that's great. It's good that we're hosting as a site, just trying to get mileage out of our kids being able to participate in that wonderful process, so.
Absolutely.
That's a good, good question.
Yeah, very good question.
All right, thanks, Pat. All right, thanks, Pat. That is all for the superintendent's report. Mr. Schultz.
Okay. Next up is the consent agenda.
If you refresh, the motion is, should be correct.
Just moving slowly. Okay, I'll see what's refreshed. Somebody can correct me if it's misstated. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes Exhibit A Personnel Recommendations Number 96 through 104 as posted and Exhibit B Athletics and Activities Personnel Recommendations Number 37B as posted, the payment of bills for April 12, 2022. Nope, I'm getting shaken off here.
And we're just going to add into, after those as posted, we're also going to add in Carla Avila resignation, Megan Caby leave of absence, Laura Lemus transfer and promotion. And then we go on with the payment of bills. Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Okay. And the payment of the bills for April 12, 2022 in the amount of $1,264,438.79 in regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of March 15, 2022.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you. On to new business.
All right, the first item in new business is Brendan, can you go to the next slide, please? Just a reminder, this is more an announcement, the board does not need to vote on this because the board already voted on our, voted on our fees for next year back in the fall when we were processing some of the implications of referendum. So just as a reminder, right now, our current fees are 545, 340, 240 and 50 for registration, parking, athletics and club fee respectively. And with additional funding or without additional funding, meaning without, without a referendum that passes this summer, the fees go to 600, 340, 260 and 50. With additional funding or with a referendum that passes, they go, they are much more normalized to 200, 200, 250. That board's already voted on this, just wanted to announce it at this time. Also because at this time, usually in March or April every year, we do our fees, either approve the fees or announce the fees in conjunction with the handbook changes, which is item number two on the new business agenda. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Keely for the handbook changes. Does anyone have any questions about what I presented earlier?
No.
Also, just one other little just detail piece, we, as we go through the handbook every year, we'll always find errors, if you will. We find a name spelled wrong or a wrong extension or somebody leaves and somebody replaces them. Obviously, just so the board is aware, we certainly take the right liberty of correcting those edits as we publish them and get them ready for the actual handbook. So we just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. We do that, you know, as an ongoing basis, so.
I move to approve the changes for the 2022-2023 Student Parent Handbook as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Blair. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Next, Mike, summer workers?
IHSA.
Oh, I'm sorry, IHSA renewal. Oh, that's for me. This is just the annual renewal to the IHSA for the 2223 school year that all participants, all participating schools, school districts agree to with the IHSA.
Questions? I move to approve the membership renewal with the Illinois High School Association for the 2022-23 school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
The approval of the summer workers for the technology department? No?
It's not on there.
Got it, got you. Okay.
Except for this approval for the photography services?
Mike, photography?
As you guys remember, we went out for photography services. This is an RFP for, and this was an annual renewal through VIP. It's two separate contracts. One is for the student portraits and the second one is for the sports athletics in yearbook, if you will. I've included, it's just, it costs the district nothing, it's just the annual renewal that we have with them. And I included both the original contracts and also the updated, just a couple of little tweaks and changes within there. And so we're asking for approval for the photography services for students in sports for the 2223 school year, the approval of.
Questions?
Just one quick one. If I'm looking at it correctly, it's just prices for the parents that are purchasing the photos. We're not outlaying any money, for instance, if we don't have freshman sports programming next year, but we've committed to some contract that says, you know what I mean?
Correct. Right now, the, our prices are exactly what they're going to be for the parents. Usually like most school districts will take a certain like little cut to kind of, we have it at absolutely zero. The district receives nothing from it, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we didn't commit to potential cut areas. Thanks.
Anything else? Not, I move to approve a one-year contract extension for photography services for students and for sports with Visual Impact Photography, Inc., VIP for the 2223 school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Blair. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Next, Mike, do you begin the annual audit?
Yeah, so we, it's amazing, it's starting already. We have the approval to begin the annual audit, so we have the letter of engagement from Baker Tilly. There's actually two letters this year because CLIC is now requiring a certified payroll to be part of the exhibit for CLIC's renewal for our workers' compensation. So we have the typical audit fee for next year, it'll be $25,750. And the $650 fee is for the CLIC Insurance Cooperative for the financials for Baker Tilly for next year's, so. Baker Tilly did our audit, last year we did an RFP for audit services there, last year was their first year. I thought they actually did a really nice job with our timeline and kind of, I would say did a reasonably well job in the middle of a pandemic as well, as far as coming out and doing everything else. So I'm actually kind of looking forward to working with them this year as well, so. And I don't usually say that about auditors, so. My recommendation is.
Questions? I move to approve beginning the annual audit and the audit engagement letters with Baker Tilly US LLP for fiscal year 22.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
So the next approval is for the medical and vision dental and life insurance premiums with EBC. The rates did come back for next year. If we're looking at the HMO plan, had an increase and so did the PPO plan, respectively 12.7% and 8.5% respectively. Vision for next year has remained the absolute same. Dental's also increased by 3.7%. The new rates are attached there in your, in the board docs as well. The insurance committee back on April the 4th met and recommended the rates to be sent off to WTHFT, the executive board there, and they have since also approved those rates. And so now we're, the administration's recommending the approval of the rates for our Board of Education as presented. Also, just as an FI, we will have open enrollment in the early part of May.
Any questions?
What's the percentage that we have right now of staff that is covered by us?
Oh, it's, I would be guessing right now, but it's upwards of, I would say, 97, 98%. It just depending on which tier and which plan, but yeah.
Are we in a co-op or are we a standalone?
No, we are through EBC, yeah. There's, I think that now they're up to 203 school districts are part of the Educational Benefit Cooperative there. That's part of Gallagher Basset, so.
Anything else? I move to approve the medical, vision, dental and life insurance premiums with Educational Benefit Cooperative for the 2223 school year as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Blair. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Our next item is the revised staffing plan. The only change to the staffing plan is we'd like the board to consider adding three more conditional one-year positions to the bottom half, if you will, of our staffing plan. These are positions that will go away at the end of the FY '23 school year. But we'd be going from five positions to eight positions on the change.
Questions? I move to approve the revised fiscal year 23 tentative staffing plan as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Next item is an MOU with the, our union regarding in early, I'm sorry, a delayed retirement option for an individual and for others who may be in a similar situation.
I move to approve a memorandum of understanding retirement delay between the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District 121 and the Warren Township High School School Federation of Teachers and Cheryl Anderson.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Blair. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Last item for the board's consideration is just a retirement agreement for the board's consideration.
Any questions? I move to approve the resignation agreement and general release for, is it Karen Efsen?
Yes, it is Karen Efsen. Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez? Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you. On to old business now.
Brendan, can you go to the next slide? We just have a few things for the board's attention. Just next one, I think is just, Pat, do you just want to talk for a minute on the new legislation? How it affects potentially some of the COVID time, if you will, it's data collection that we've been doing?
Governor Pritzker recently signed a bill that covers any COVID time taken by school employees, which includes anyone who works for the school district, like bus driver, classified staff or a teacher or administrator, that their time would be covered, they would not have to use sick time. We did have an agreement with our union that was already in place, so people were working remotely when they were impacted by COVID. Where it didn't happen, where we're doing some backtracking is when people had some childcare issues due to COVID, they were taking their own time. That was not part of the agreement with the union. So we're trying to backtrack now and work with our teaching staff to document that and give back their sick days if they can show us that information, their child was COVID positive or had symptoms or something like that. So relatively easy process. We'll work with our staff, give us plenty of time to make sure we're in compliance with the law. But it shouldn't be too bad because again, we had that agreement in place where people were working remotely. So the numbers shouldn't be that large for us.
Thanks, Brendan. Questions for Dr. Keely?
No.
Next slide, Brendan. And with our, in old business of our, just some, maybe I didn't put a slide in there. Oh, one more, Brendan. Thank you. There is one, I think, one more. Just a couple of reminders for some upcoming referendum information. One more slide, Brendan, if it'll go. Thank you. And so just, we are still, by the way, we have everything approved at the county clerk's office in regards to our actual question, if you will, and the notice. So that's all been approved. We're just waiting for them to give us an okay to post on our campuses as well as on our website. So we've been in ongoing communication with them. We're all set, we believe. We do have a presentation at the Wildwood Park District Building. That thanks to Mr. Demonte. That is tomorrow, actually, so we're excited to go to the Wildwood Park District Building tomorrow. We have posted that as well, so all board members, if you want, and you're available, those are at 6:30, are generally standard 6:30 and 7:30 presentation time. And then we are going to, on May the 3rd, we have a presentation in the evening at Milburn Elementary School. So we were just trying to reach out to different, either municipalities or schools, if you will, different portions of our Warren Township. Thanks to Mr. Drake, on the 11th of May, we've scheduled kind of a later afternoon presentation time at the Village of Wadsworth building, so that'll, I think those are at the, I'm going to say 3 and 4, something like that. We'll post it as we get closer, but that's on May the 11th. Also, we've been at every, we've been at the Starbucks, the West Starbucks, Bozmar on Grand Avenue, actually. But the one that's to the west is the one we've been going to every more, every Saturday morning from 8 to 9.
Is that the one near nothing but cakes?
That is the one.
Just checking.
And we also just, we have our second district mailer coming out, going out on or about May the 9th. We want to make sure it gets home. We're thinking by May the 13th, there'll be more specific voter, actual voter information on that particular mailer. And a little bit less of just details of the referendum information we had sent out in our last mailer. So we're looking forward to that. But we also wanted to make sure, is there anything else the board members want to talk about in regards to referendum information presentations or anything else?
Want to, just a comment, as we go and do these little kind of communities, it's great that we host it there. Of course, I'm in huge support of that, but it's also important to get the word out to those communities more than just the Warren mailers. So I'm really, it's probably more for the board members here. But if like, for instance, the Wildwood, someone I know posted on their homeowners group. So that way hopefully that get, so if they're.
I'll do it for Wadsworth.
That's what I, that's exactly where I'm going, is if somebody who has an in with one of these Facebook groups or whatever, just to get it to more than just people that have students here, I think that would be hugely helpful.
And we do, and Mr. Demonte, you had a, did you, have you, where else were you going or did you go? Did you go to another Wildwood kind of community event?
Oh, yeah, the Easter, the Easter egg hunt. There were, there were tons of people there.
Imagine.
Hundreds, a lot of great conversations, getting people the information that they needed and.
That's how I picture you.
Yeah. So I mean, it's those little conversations, just getting people information, just so they're aware and feel they're informed when they go to vote, so. Yeah.
We certainly appreciate all the board members' collective and individual efforts to help us in this. And if there's other locations, please don't hesitate to reach out to us.
Are you posting like Wadsworth and Milburn as board meetings, you said?
Yeah, we're posting all, from, we, for us, it's just as easy for us to post it, I think. So we're generally will, do we consider them open when we've been posting them? We haven't had any recently. We're worried too much about numbers. It'd be a good problem to have though, if all of a sudden we have kind of too many people show up at a venue, so.
How is Starbucks going? Any feedback on that?
I was there this Saturday. It was pretty slow. I mean, you tend to see a fair number of the same people there. I'd say anytime I've been there, most of the people I've talked to already know about it and they're voting for it or they're just asking for additional information or can you clarify this, so.
Were you there with Mr. Giochiras?
Yes.
Yes. Ones we've, I, you know, the times I've been there, although the, sometimes the number isn't overwhelming or it is a lot of the same regulars, each of the times I've been there, there's been at least one person there that's engaged me in a 20 to 25 minute, you know, conversation, either regardless which side of it they were on. So I do think that although it's kind, and I do think people realize, even if they're the same people that are there, I think they appreciate the fact that we're trying to make sure that, you know, all of us are just trying to make sure that everybody has all the information that they need. And if nothing else, they can't say that we're not trying to get information to people. So they, but the conversations I've had with people whenever they're very engaging and good questions and, you know, some, so I think it's worth it.
I think it's absolutely worth it, even if we have a conversation, extended conversation with just a couple people each Saturday. I mean, they're going to go home and talk to a couple people more and a couple people more, so it's been well worth it.
It'll expand too, as weather gets nicer?
Yeah.
People will come out.
You know, all that being said, I think it was a board suggesting. You know, all that being said, I think it was a board suggestion, I think, right? Wasn't it? Did it come out of admin or was it?
Bency, I think.
Yeah. So I noticed, and I think you did a good job of reminding people to sign up, but, and I signed up for a few more, but I think there's still a lot of open slots, so it's, I worry a little bit that we come up with all these suggestions, but then we don't go into it and then our administrators are there on a Saturday after working long days, so. And they're going to be there anyway on Saturday to support this, which is good, but it's nice for us to support them, so I'm not sure how, and it's hard to commit, I mean, Saturday, I mean, I'm pretty booked too, but I'm not sure how us seven can fill in those last few dates without it falling on one or two people, so. Just food for thought for the seven of us.
I would.
I know, no, I know. No, no, yeah, I'm not, yeah, and that wasn't my intention, it was just, in hindsight's always 20/20, it's like, maybe it should have been one Saturday a month or two Saturday months or every other Saturday, or, you know, if we could staff it, then that's fine, but.